Good evening. Thank you for joining us. We're going to call the Castle Hills regular city council meeting in order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is present. We will proceed with the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Zemiron, will you lead us? Thank you, sir. Okay, first. And that's there's that. Ms. Tedford, do we have anybody signed up for assistance to be heard? Okay, thank you. We will proceed to the consent agenda. Mr. Joyce.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as stated items five, one through five, five.
Second, perfect. No discussion on favor unanimous. Thank you, counsel. First item in your business, six point one public hearing on the application from Courage Coffee Company for an SUP at twenty one zero one Northwest Military Highway, legal description lot seventy, block nine, Castle Hill City Block two zero eight Castle Hills Bank subdivision in the city of Castle Hills, Bear County, Texas, according to plat recorded in volume nine five zero three, page one three seven of the deed and plat records of Bear County, Texas, to operate a mobile coffee truck trailer on said property. It is six thirty two, and we will open the public hearing. Have anybody to speak on the public hearing? Okay, we will close the public hearing at six thirty two and proceed on to six point two. Discussion of possible action on an application from Courage Coffee Company for an SUP at twenty one zero one Northwest Military Highway, legal description lot seventy, block nine Castle Hills City Block two oh eight Castle Hills Bank subdivision in the city of Castle Hills, Texas, Bear County, according to the plat recorded in volume nine five of the D and plat records of Bear County, Texas, to operate a mobile coffee truck trailer on said property. Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not see the applicants who who actually attended the zoning commission. The zoning commission discussed the item. We had a few citizens who actually lived on North Manton come and speak against the coffee truck. The zoning commission had a few questions and mostly regarding traffic, and they denied the SUP three to one. Our chairman, Mr. Solis, could not make it tonight, so he just wanted me to pass that on that he couldn't attend, but zoning commission denied three to one. Made a recommendation to deny.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Rappley. We have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the recommendation of the zoning commission on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. Joyce.
My second.
Thank you. Any discussion? On favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Next up, we have three presentation and discussion on a potential economic development opportunity proposed by a business prospect. So I'd like to start off by saying that this is the third time the city council has had conversations regarding this development, and we asked for this to happen again in an effort to maximize transparency. We understand there's a lot going on, and we wanted to make sure that we gave everybody an opportunity here. What exactly is going to be said again tonight so that if and when we decide to proceed, we can say that we went above and beyond to ensure that the residents knew exactly what's going on, similar to the way we did when we borrowed money for the streets. That being said, Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor. I do believe we have Mr. Breimer here representing Vaquero to provide a presentation and overview of the project. I believe, Mayor, we have the presentation loaded.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Which one of these is it? Mr. Breimer, thank you for joining us again.
Yes, the Mr. Mayor, Councilman. I'd like to. My name is Scott Breimer. I'm the president of Vaquero Multifamily. My address is thousand three Northwest Military Highway, San Antonio. We'd like to break our presentation in the short time that we have available to us to discuss the architecture or the character of the project, and then I'll come in and discuss the PFC. Jared Thierath is gonna make that presentation.
Hi, my name is Jared Thierath. I'm the senior vice president for Vaquero Ventures. I'm going to keep this brief, so I've scripted my comments on note cards here to try to keep it as precise as possible. Okay, so here's the rendering. The highlights Castle Hills is going through rediscovery. This development will provide vibrancy not only for Castle Hills, all of Castle Hills, but particularly this area of it would be the only class A plus for rent products in the city. Activates a track that sat vacant and undeveloped for thirty plus years. The streetscape will be very pedestrian friendly. As you can see on the rendering, there will be bike racks. There will be benches. There will be decorative lighting. And there will be sidewalks that don't currently, excuse me, that don't currently exist on Winston and that part of Lock Hill. The design, it's very contemporary and modern. As you can see in the rendering, there's a lot of glass, a lot of glazing, flat roofs. You will not be, one will not be able to see the garage from any of the streets. We've tucked the garage centrally within, within the, within the units. Significant glass on the facade. There's, excuse me, an interior courtyard with a pool that you'll see in a minute in the site plan. The facade will be a mixture of glass, brick, stucco, possibly stone and fiber cement siding. Some of the concerns that we're working and that we've worked through to alleviate is one is traffic impact. It's currently zoned high density commercial. Multifamily development presents less traffic than a similar sized retail development. We're only able, excuse me, this project, we're able to have one egress ingress versus a retail development such as the one, I guess, just north of this that has four, one is one egress ingress is along military and it has three along Winston. With the multifamily, we're able to do a single one and not only push it to Lock Hill, but push it all the way, I guess, south as far as we can that will push residents to go down Lock Hill versus coming around Winston and going through the busiest thoroughfare of the city, which is Northwest Military. So we're trying to take traffic off that as well as the community, I guess, just west of military, which from my understanding has a lot of cut throughs. Another big issue is drainage. The project will contain underground attention. Brian, do you mind going to the site plan real quick? It should be on that. If you'll just scroll down. But the project will contain underground attention. Yeah, so it's kind of, kind of in the corner where you see some light blue approximately in that location. There's a lot of water runoff at that corner that kind of goes towards the Boy Scouts of America site. We're working, excuse me, we're also working on analysis from the civil engineer that will prove the site. Once developed, will have less water runoff than it does now undeveloped. Again, because of the underground attention, everything's going to drain into that underground attention. Also a concern, a sense of security. Currently, there's no lighting along Winston. It looks like an alley. It's very dark at night. This project will not only provide, as mentioned earlier, decorative lighting all the way down Winston, but also Lock Hill and military. But there's going to be a lot of ambient lighting and indirect lighting from the balconies and scores of windows overlooking those areas again, which is currently very dark. The project will help act as a buffer between the city and the deeply affordable neighborhood, just on the other side of Black Hills, Selma. Many residents of the development also use the newly created sidewalks along Winston to walk their dogs, walk their children, et cetera. Average monthly rent is one thousand three hundred and seventy one, which is on par with other upscale communities throughout San Antonio, such as Stone Oak, the rim, Lock and Terra, Pearl, South Town, the quarry, Alamo Heights. Ranges will range from one thousand one hundred for five hundred and fifty square feet to twenty one hundred for a one thousand three hundred and sixty square foot, three bedroom unit. The amenities, Brian, do you mind going down? I think, yeah, go down one more if you don't mind. Yeah, that's fine. So the amenities. I'm sorry, if you go down one more to the kitchen, I think it's the next one. So the amenities, you know, very high end, class A plus amenities, quartz countertops, stainless steel appliances, glass backsplashes, frameless showers, modern hardware, you know, probably solar window shades, if not a minimum two inch faux window, window blinds. Adilities, there's going to be a golf simulator that we propose, the fitness center with yoga studio, bicycle storage room, dog park, electrical vehicle charging stations, pool with private cabanas and the conference rooms and a conference cafe. And that's it.
Again, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Wanted to introduce again our company, Vaquero Ventures is a Fort Worth based company that is the largest single tenant net lease developer, or one of the two or three in the United States. Their preferred developer for seven eleven Starbucks, O'Reilly Auto Parts. They've also got an industrial vertical, and in May, our team came from another company and started a multifamily platform for them. Our, our group has decades of multifamily experience from high rise to podium to wrap to garden style apartment projects in and around the, the South Texas market and as far east as Florida and as far west as California. From our perspective, we think the benefits of having a PFC structure do the following, and we'll do the following for this area. It's going to revitalize an area that, that is frankly been missed over the last thirty years. We also believe that this will bring a significant lift to the retailers that are in the area. The restaurants will have four hundred and fifty plus or minus residents there, and we think it'll, it'll create a tremendous amount of vibrancy for the, for this area of town. The, the revenue generated from this project is, when it fully reverts, is likely going to be equal to an entire years of your budget. And it's, 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 you know, I don't know if the, we might do a little bit better. We might do a little bit worse, but we are within the, the bands of, of that kind of revenue for you all. As Jared mentioned, this will be a class A residential community. From a design standpoint, this will be transformational for the north, for the side of your community in the military corridor. Jared touched on the lighting. In, in this environment and in this site particular, people might ask, why do you need a PFC? Why do you, why do you require acquire, require PFC to do this? PFCs were put in place to revitalize great areas that might have been skipped over or weren't activated, and that's really what's happened to this site, in my opinion. There, it's a tweener. You can prove great rents out in the medical center. You can prove great rents out in the rim. You can prove great rents out in Alamo Heights. The reason you can't prove great rents in this location is because there's nothing here. It's, there's nothing that you can directly point to and say, you know, look, that is getting this kind of rent. So this PFC structure really de-risks the transaction from our standpoint. It de-risks the transaction from the investor standpoint. It de-risks the transaction from the lender standpoint. And if everything goes like I fully expect it to, we'll pay more through your participation than we would have ever paid in ad valorem taxes. It's just going to be directed to you all. It's not going to be directed to other taxing entities. The, the PFC statute was created by the legislature for this Barry thing to go into areas that, that frankly need to be proven, and they did that at Brooks, at Brooks, at the Brooks base, and that followed with numerous projects that didn't require or didn't need the help of a PFC. Half the units, and by the way, it's never easy speaking in front of a city council. I don't care how many times you've done it. I hope my, any inartful way that I speak doesn't dilute the message behind a PFC. I, you know, I'm not the greatest public speaker in the world, but very passionate about these projects. With half the tenants in the project are going to be limited to eighty percent of area median income. We believe that services, teachers, police officers, nurses, firefighters, young professionals, recent college graduates, that you all are just frankly missing in, in the community. And, and we believe that this will advance that. The creation of the PFC by the city council, again, will allow you to participate in the revenues of the project. This workforce housing is not a subsidized project. It's not section eight, and it's not low income. It's meant for a piece of the community that, that just is, is between. If approved by the city, Vaquero would enter into an agreement with the city and an operating agreement, and you would be a full participant in that. And again, you know, currently, the, the property is generating about thirty some odd thousand dollars a year in taxes to you all. On our closing, you're going to get ten X in that just through the fee that, that is normally given in these structures. Not to mention the reversion value that you all receive. We're thrilled to be here if you all would like us to be here, and I love the site. I love your community. I think people all around San Antonio are going to rediscover Castle Hills. I think you have tremendous opportunity. And, and I hope this is, 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 you know, a part of the story, this community, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Thank you, Mr. Breimer. Just to, to prime the conversation, Mr. Breimer is a developer who can go over some of the details related to the development, but we also have some folks here from Bracewell. We have Ms. Great House and Mr. Plummer, who can tell us more about the components of the PFC on the statue, statue side, I believe. Granted, we discussed last meeting that we cannot go too in depth into those conversations regarding the components and the mechanisms of the PFC as it relates to Castle Hills until we go into executive session, and we can't go into executive session until we have a contract with Bracewell or we sign the engagement letter with Bracewell. Just for point of clarification for everybody that's with us, it's customary for the developer to pay the legal fees, even though the council would be servicing city of Castle Hills, and we, they have our best interest in mind, and if we decide to proceed with this, we are not obligated to seeing the deal to its completion. There's still many steps that would be done for us to finalize a transaction before we're committed, so to speak. That being said, if anybody has any questions for Mr. Breimer, now's the time. Mr. Isbrand.
Mr. Breimer, thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate it. I just have a couple of questions based on feedback that I've gotten from the community, and I wanted to give you the opportunity to explain that. I know there's probably people watching tonight, so whether they're here in person or watching, I think this would be of interest to them. Probably the primary thing that I've had people ask me about is why seventy five years on this property tax exemption? Would you articulate a little bit that for us?
Sure. Ideally, a ninety nine year ground lease is, is an instrument that effectuates essentially having fee title to, to a piece of real estate. If you're the, if you're the, if you have the leasehold interest. Seventy five years is something that's been traditionally done in the PFCs. And it's, it's as short a time and as long a time as you could, you could do to raise the capital both on the debt side and the equity side. So we're going to have to bring about twenty million dollars in equity capital to the transaction along with a very significant amount of debt. And neither debt or equity will provide that with at least, without at least a seventy five year ground lease.
Thank you for that. And then would you explain again for us novices or those who are watching, would be curious? What, what does it mean when you say class A housing? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. That illustration is, is class A multifamily housing. It's contemporary design. It's new construction. It's the types of finishes that we demonstrated here tonight, quartz countertops, frameless showers, backsplashes, dual vanities, all of those types of things are what I would consider to be class A multifamily. And in this project will be that. We would not be able to attract the capital to this deal unless it was considered class A in every aspect for, for multifamily, and, and that's by definition of what class A multifamily would be.
And, and how do you maintain a class A standard twenty years from now, thirty years from now? How does that work?
True. So with the amount of capital that's going to be invested in this, the, the equity partners and the lenders really dictate through a business plan and the operating agreement, the standard which you will maintain this. It'll be, there's, there'll be a general provision, provision in, in all of our documents. It has to be maintained in a first class fashion in the rents that are generated. You know, in the appropriate operating expenses, controllable operating expenses. You know, valet trash service, cleaning, maintenance, you know, personnel, staffing, all of those types of things. We would never be able to attract any of the capital if it wasn't maintained in that, in that way. We are also making a fairly significant co-investment in the transaction, and our risk in not maintaining it in a, in a class A fashion is we'll be removed as the general partner if we don't. And lots of bad things will happen if that occurs. So we're not only you have skin in the game, but we'll have a very strict set of, set of guidelines within our partnership with our, our investors and lenders. And y'all, through your lease with us, will have a very strong hand in, at least in the four PFCs that I've done. You, you will have a very strong hand in that standard and scoping that out.
And then my last question for now at least is, do you have a similar development anywhere else in San Antonio that would, people could see to better understand what it looks like, how it operates?
Sure. I'd be happy to send a list of PFCs that have been completed. As I mentioned, we all left a development company that, that currently has a project and lease up that our team designed, capitalized, put on the ground, and it's doing very, very well, and I'd be happy to send that over. I'm, 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 I'll do that through our attorney.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Paul.
Mr. No, is it okay if I ask for a little more? Again, for people who are watching, understanding and more in depth of the tax aspect, the savings and what the city gets. Is that appropriate at this time? Is that okay, or do we wait? Well, let me, let me just be generic then. The thirty thousand dollars a year taxes that would be there if, if in fact we had a taxable unit on there in normal, we're talking way beyond that. So I just want people to know that that's not something that is set in stone. I think you've given information, and I know that, that the potential taxes on the amount of the project, the projected amount of the project is more substantial than that because you're talking about taxes that you're saving all over the city, including the schools and everything else. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that was the thirty thousand dollars a year did include all of the, the
Castle Hills, just Castle Hills.
And I was trying to, I was trying to position that against the opportunity set that's in front of Castle Hills now. What the, what it's earning currently as raw land.
Well, I understand that, and I guess I'll wait until executive session, go into that a little bit more detail, but so they can be brought forward later, but there's more to that than we've discussed here, and I don't want I guess confuse the issue. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. May.
First of all, thanks for being here, and I appreciated your comment about the kinds of tenants that might be attracted policemen, first responders, teachers, and young professionals. Embedding those individuals is important to this community. But I was also thinking that with this price point, it is very well situated with a major airport. So there, in addition to that, would be corporate executives, Mexican nationals who data shows spend an incredible amount of money here in San Antonio, as well as family members that come with some frequency. It would actually be a savings for them to have a lease. So what is Vaquero going to do in terms of marketing for this project?
So we'll, we'll utilize all social media platforms. We won't do it, but the management company that we hire will do that. There's numerous types of advertising that multifamily projects do. I would say that the geomapping now and the social media, I believe, to be the, you know, the, the, the key component to marketing a multifamily asset, and the project is going to be so significant in terms of drive by. It's probably going to be one of the least, in my view, it's probably going to be one of the easiest lease ups we have, because it's just, it's just right there. And it's going to, it's going to have so much visibility. So social media, those types of platforms, marketing to USA, the medical center, first responders, boots, a lot of boots on the ground as well. That, you know, those, those types of marketing efforts is what, is what we'll do to, to lease it. But again, we'll hire a third party property management company. It's not something that we have expertise in. But that, that's how you do it.
I have a a conceptual question, because I want, I want to see it in my mind and on paper, too. Can you give us an idea of the range of options running from, say, a small suite up to the largest unit and number of bedrooms?
Sure. So we have five hundred and fifty square foot, one bedrooms to thirteen hundred square, thirteen hundred and fifty square feet, three bedrooms, and we have seven hundred, nine hundred thousand square foot floor plans dispersed among that. And, and those are, those are ones, twos, and threes.
And threes. And would you have some units that were handicap accessible?
Yeah, so we're required to, yeah, the design standard to, to, to design them percentage of the units for handicap accessibility.
You may not have the data for this next question I'm going to ask, but it impresses me as being very similar to what's happening at the Pearl. Lot of synergy from the Pearl to the units and the units back to the Pearl. What is the economic impact in terms of the number of units to the surrounding business? Do you have any past experiences that would tell us that?
I don't, other than just intuitively, I can, I can imagine the, the Mexican restaurant across the street with four hundred and fifty residents. You know, all your great restaurants in the community. I just, I, I can't tell you. One thing about me, I won't tell you something I don't know. I'll tell you something I do know, and I can't answer the question, other than just intuitively. I just. And I can't answer the question, other than just intuitively, I just can't see how 450 residents don't do a significant, give a significant lift to the retailers and restaurant operators.
I walked this property last weekend and I noticed the catty corner on Lock Hill Selma, there's a very large apartment complex already there. What is the difference between this concept and that one? And how, what are the number comparables?
So I believe the, 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 the unit, the average unit sizes in the, I think, I believe it's called the Alon across the street. They're slightly larger. They might be 900 square foot averages. Our, our projects in the 800 square foot average range. The, the, the inside, the inside, the units themselves, it's night and day. You know, that was built 20 years ago. And we'll have a completely updated package within the units. The, the drive by aesthetic will be completely different. The amenities within the community will be completely different, updated. Very similar to what you might see at the Pearl and the Broadway East Corridor, Alamo Heights. The rim, you know, we'll have, we'll have that, we'll have all of those characteristics. And the project across the street doesn't. Just by virtue, it's virtue of its age, they weren't doing that then.
Thank you.
Mr. Joyce?
Just a couple of questions, if I may. Thank you again for coming, Mr. Prime. It's nice of you guys to come out here once again. I guess the question perhaps I'm most curious about is the transfer. When your team decides that it's time to get out five years from now, or whenever that happens, and we have this agreement with you, which potentially makes the city all happy. What becomes of that when the property, when the leasehold transfers? Is it all renegotiated? Or is it stay in place? Or what happens to that?
Well, I can give you my opinion, and I certainly will. And any question you all have with me, I think it is absolutely the time to to answer those. And but your counsel have to really answer this for you. But what I believe, we'll sell this, say, within before month 60 at some point after lease up. And as the rents start maturing, we'll sell the asset. And the lease that we have with with you as the, as the tenant, we're the, we have a leasehold interest makes ensures that the next buyer has to assume all of the obligations that we're assuming. Now, what I think could happen is a new buyer could come in and say, look, we've got things have changed in the market. We need to redo, it's maybe not the second buyer, but maybe the third buyer could come in and say, you know, we need to put new cabinets in the project. We need to upgrade, we need to put electric charging stations, you know, throughout the garage. We need to do, it could be a myriad of things. And they might ask for a different economic consideration for doing that. They might ask for potentially a longer, you know, to renew the ground lease for, to make it, to make sure they have 75 years left. There could be a number of things that occur. The way I look at this is if we can't all figure it out at some point during the cycle of these deals, then it's a great enough deal that we just hang on to it and, and, and just enjoy the cash flows. It's not what we're in business to do, but we refinance it. And then we, we, we hang on to the cash flows. That's kind of a, you know, a worst case scenario for us because we're in the merchant development business. But it's not a bad problem to have if you're us. So I think, I think collectively, if there's continual paydays in this for the city, which there would be through, through the PFC, I think everybody will get together and common sense will prevail and water will seek its own level. So yes, I can see some renegotiations. I don't believe that the next or the, maybe the second guy or the third guy is exactly going to want to live with the terms that we have. But I believe on the, on the first couple, it'd be very, very minor, but.
Okay, well, thank you for that. In the, in the statute, you read it, it describes this as a public facility. And so the question is, are there any facilities for the public? It looks like you've got a beautiful pool courtyard and all that sort of thing. You mentioned meeting rooms. Is any of that for the general public? Or is that just for your residents?
That's for our residents. We've got to create, you know, it's, it's, it's everybody's home. It's, it's, I think the acronym Public Facility Corporation. Actually, I don't know where it's, where it's, where it's coming from. But, but I don't, it doesn't, it's not meant to describe that it's available to the public. These will all be key fobbed and secured to where people can't just walk in on the street.
Very well, thanks. And then a couple of quick architecty questions, if I may. Maybe this is perhaps better by Jared, but I don't know. Have you guys built one of these things of this size where you just have one way in and out for your vehicles?
So in a perfect world, I, we originally conceived the ingress and egress coming off of Winston.
All of it are just, or split?
But we originally conceived you could take a right off of Winston, out of, out of the project, the garage from, take a right on Winston or left and get out to Northwest Military or Lock Hill Selma. We, you know, after hearing some, some comments from stakeholders in the community, we went back to the drawing board and tried to see how we could limit it to that one point of ingress and egress off of, off of Winston. I'm sorry, off of Lock Hill Selma. But yes, this type of project is, is, there aren't generally more than two ways out. And oftentimes, there's just one way out.
Okay, that's, that's a lot of cars to be going through one driveway.
I just want to add one thing. At our previous employer, we were building a five story wrap near the Pearl. And we had, which is a story, by the way, that's rendered at five, but we were looking at the density at four. So it won't be as imposing as that. But we were able to do a single egress ingress on that one, and that's a five story. So, but, you know, we've done a high rise in Austin, a single one in high rise in Miami. So it is very common to have a single egress ingress.
Okay. And another question for you, Jared, please. Do you often wrap your garage on four sides with building?
Yeah, yes, yes, sir. We always try to do that aesthetically. That's the best way to do it. You never want to show a facade inside of a garage anywhere.
So the garage is mechanically vented then?
It will be, but ours, we're proposing space, and this is a code, but we're proposing space where the units won't come up to it. So it naturally can be ventilated. We can also touch the code, we can build.
That microphone will lift up.
We can build the, excuse me, the the, the units up to the garage and we have to mechanically ventilate it. Or I think it's a minimum, and don't quote me on this, I think 10 feet around if, as long as we keep the units 10 feet away from the garage, it can just be naturally ventilated. So one or the other, we, yes, we have, and it will be per code, whichever way we.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Gregory?
Appreciate you looking at Castle Hills. And I'm glad you pointed out that the rendering that we're looking at is not the rendering of what is going up. My question is, why isn't it going to be five stories?
We, with five stories, you get into two issues. The first issue is a cost issue. When, when, when you go from, you know, four to five stories, you do a, is it type three, Jared? You go to type three, and that adds a significant amount of cost. It also, for us, it adds another 50 units that I'm just not comfortable with having to lease. On one hand, you could get very tempted and say, wow, that's really going to, you know, generate a ton more return. But it also, in my view, 350 units generates a lot more risk. And, and I'm comfortable with, with right at 300 units for this, for this site. So that's, that's the primary driver for me.
But you have said here, it's going to be a very easy lease up.
Yeah, you know, you get it, you get above 350 units. Really, you, you start to cannibalize your existing lease up. So, so, so the lease up of 300 units is going to be a very easy lease up, in my opinion, because of the location, the community, schools, proximity to jobs. I'm not sure I'd say, I'm not sure I'd have the same. You know, the last, you make all your money in your last units, right? And if 50, if the last 50 units are hard to lease, then we haven't done our job. And we haven't, we haven't maximized the rent that we could generate on the market units, for example. And, and I, and I'm just, I'm just a believer in 300 plus or minus units for this location.
A traffic study is absolutely essential for me to come around to this thing. Have either of you two looked at Lock Hill Selma, what it is like at seven, eight, and nine o'clock on a weekday morning on a two lane road? Of all the cars that are crammed onto Lock Hill Selma already?
It's busy.
It, that's an understatement. And it just seems to me, you've got to have more than just trying to, what was the word? Well, you're trying to push, you're trying to push, put all the traffic on Lock Hill Selma. And to me, that is a red flag for a lot of danger in case you have to have an ambulance or a fire truck or something to come in. And you've got traffic from the light all the way back up to West Avenue. And I've seen the traffic at one time, almost half that street from the light backed up, and no one can get out of the side streets to get to work. Now, fortunately, I work at home. But I've seen people who've been stalled, not being able to get out of their street for some time already. And I don't know how many cars this is going to add to a two lane road. And only a two lane road that's, that people in this complex would be able to use. So that traffic study is essential to get around that question. Why don't you have onsite 24 hour security?
This is a, this is a cost issue. The revenue that can be generated out of this, out of this project in any project similar to this, it makes it prohibitive from an operating expense standpoint to have 24 hour security. We'll have, we make deals with police officers in our projects to be onsite. I believe we'll naturally have that anyway because of the, the type of product offering that we'll, that we'll have. We will have security at peak hours that if we, if we deem we need it. Our first priority is going to be to make sure that our investment is solid. And consequently, what we're all hoping we realize out of this, if it occurs, is solid and maintaining a secure environment is, is a part of that. I don't believe that we could afford full time security, 24 hour security. And it might, it might cause the investment scenario to, to suffer, that we just can't. We can't, we can't dilute that operationally.
If I know the complex that Councilman May is talking about, I've lived in that complex, lived there for a half a year while a mold flushed me out of my house. They have onsite security. They have, and this was 15 years ago. They had people come by every morning picking up dog poop that all those people's dogs generate. There, there were private rooms, garages on the, in the building, underneath the building themselves. I had one that had a garage in the apartment complex, in the apartment itself, and I walked up the stairs. So these are things that are already in a, a very successful apartment complex just across the street from where you all are going. And it seems to me it's an offering that brings that place to be almost fully occupied all the time. So I'm just saying that there are some things that you, you might consider Sure. doing, but then again, there's no guarantee everybody's going to be doing it.
I'm guessing it's the Alon at Castle Hills across the street.
I think, yes, I don't know whether it was called, it was called when I was there.
That, yes, that it's a garden product. Very open, it's the breezeways versus ours, which is a very urban, it's an urban wrap. So the only way in, everything's fobbed, you can't walk through the gate or jump the fence. Everything's fobbed. The only way to get in would be coming through the garage. And, you know, we'll have cameras everywhere, and I guess anybody can get in a garage anywhere. But time will necessitate if we have to have onsite security, or maybe we have evening patrols if it gets out of, out of hand. But we always, the management company will always kind of gauge it once we open. But, but the one across the way, I'm very familiar with it, it does have breezeways. Anybody can walk in right up to somebody's front door. You can't do that at this one. The only way, again, would be walking through a garage, but we're going to have a high speed roll up cameras. You'll have to have a fob through it, but it's much more secure. It's much easier to secure a wrap like this on five acres versus, I think it's roughly 20 acres, a surface park garden product across the street. So something like this, I guess, in essence, or in conclusion, is just much easier to secure and patrol than, than a 20 plus or 15 plus acre development.
Well, I hope you're right, because I'd hate to see this complex turn into something that the Castle Hills Police are going to be called to regularly for this, that, and the other. When you consider what is across the street on the San Antonio side. It's something to be consider. Have you all, and I don't know whether you can give this number here, maybe you can give it in another meeting. The savings that you're going to get from property taxes, the forbearance of property tax at Castle Hills. Have you come up with a number of how much money that would be over 75 years? Having a normal appreciation of 5% per annum compounded on your property tax? How many tens of millions or hundreds of millions of dollars in property taxes will not be collected?
I think there's, you know, it, it depends on the cycle and the speed at which the project is, is delivered. But I think stabilized, this would probably generate a million. That number equates to about 40% of the normal operating expense that you would have if you included that. And for me, you know, that's not a, an investment that I would make right now, just mainly given because there's no, there's no direct comp for it. And, and I just believe in the PFC structure. So those are the only transactions that I'm currently working on. And our pipeline is probably $350 million worth of this product. So plenty of guys that do do market rate deals. I'm just not a believer. I think you have to be, you know, you have to build to your cap rate. You have to pray interest rates stay low. You have to pray that exit cap rates remain historically low. And I'm just not, personally, I'm not a believer in it. I am a believer in this product, though, and I'm a believer in this structure. So that's why, you know, so, so if you took it over 10 years, it could be $15 million in tax that, that, that could have been realized.
See, I think you all are right when you said this is a remarkable piece of property. And it has been overlooked because you're clustering at the Pearl with other things that are being built. You see clustering on the river. You don't have anything to cluster really with here right now. But the high rise, it overlooks the rock pile when it was built back in the 60s. But I'm just, I, I really wonder whether or not if something was built that would be attractive to people. Five or 600 square foot room is not a room. It's a place that you can barely lie down in and put your bicycle in. But if you, I can't help but believe that this is such a prime bit of property, which I think it is, that a different type of configuration that would not require property taxes to be debated, but, but almost guaranteed success if you went for the middle to upper end consumer of apartments rather than sort of a mixed bag of who you're trying to get here right now. I admit that this PFC is an interesting concept. It really is. But this is going to be Castle Hills is one shot to get it right. And it goes to branding, it goes to a lot of different things. And And PF, and it's just, there's a lot in the mix.
I, I get it. It's a, you know, it took me four months when I first heard about the, the statute to get my mind wrapped around it and, and, and go through the pros and cons. It's a, it's a, you know, it's, it's a challenging structure. Properly utilized, you know, it's, it's, it's a boon. It'd be, it'll be a boon for the city. It'll de, it'll de-risk the transaction from my perspective. Most of the unit sizes that we've talked about, that's what's being built now, whether it's market or, or, or PFC. We're not reinventing any kind of wheel in terms of, you know, market dynamics. And it will serve, you know, you, you'll, you'll have great quality residents in this community, in this project, along with, like you said, some very affluent Mexican nationals, doctors from the medical center, you know, such a convenient location that, that, that your community enjoys. You know, I just, I just love it. I think you're, I think you guys are poised for, 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 for real magnificent opportunities because there's just, it's kind of skipped, you know? A lot of the development has skipped this area. And when I look at it and I think about it intuitively, it just, it shouldn't be that way. And there, you have tremendous opportunity here and up. So I don't know, Councilman, it's just, it's the business model that we've, that we like, and it's the one that I believe in. So that's the one that I'm willing to stake my job on.
Well, I don't have, frankly, I have no reservation that you or your people, I think you'll do a very fine job. I'm just thinking about what Castle Hills will look like 10, 15, 20, 30, 40, 50 years down the road. Fortunately, I'm not going to be here, I'll be six feet under. But this is going to define where Castle Hills moves in the future very significantly, and will either stall before we get started, or it'll be a real takeoff. And that's what I, it's an intangible thing to figure out. And it's, it's very tempting, the low hanging fruit in the first four or five years. Very tempting. But how about the next 10, or the next 15, or the next 20? I'm trying to, that, that's why I'm glad we're having these meetings because I'm trying to figure that out as best as you can with, it's all it is, is intuitive guessing.